Anyway, Finance Committee, may I come to order? Before we get started, this is our new Finance member, Dan Carey. I want you to meet some of our, you know, the Mayor, Jane, our Personnel Director.
How are you doing?
Members of the Retirement Board who they'll introduce.
Good.
Okay.
I get that a lot.
And Val, our Auditor. Melissa is here, she's our, and Connie is the Board Member.
Sullivan.
Sullivan came down from the Retirement Board.
And Jimmy Donahue.
Jimmy, Jimmy, right?
Yep.
Okay. Mayor, approval of the minutes, I'll move that we accept the minutes as nicely written. I gave you a copy of them, although you have to abstain.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes are accepted and have been sent. Do you have anything beyond the agenda, Karen, to tell us?
No, you have nothing on your agenda.
All right, public speak, nobody here is public, you're all important people. We have no new business, we have continuing business. I'm going to deal with items other than retirement first, we'll hopefully get them fast. Let's talk about the City Council budget. For my councilors who are new to this, we are preparing a budget based on last year that we submit to the Mayor for approval, well, we first submitted to the full Council for approval. Barbara pretty much manages our budget, so I'll turn it over to Barbara to tell us what she is recommending for next year.
Well, I'll let you guys decide that one.
Right, yeah.
What I put on the top...
This one?
Yep, yep, okay. Basically, I kind of pulled out last year's budget before we level funded it, and was kind of starting with that.
You mean last year's?
This would actually have been this year, because, you know, we, the Council approved the budget, and Karen, you know, asked everybody to level funds, so I'm pulling that original budget back out as a starting point.
Okay.
So, let's skip over the top one right now, just go down to expenses. Advertising is for legal ads. Legal ads varies depending on what's going on, whether supplemental appropriations need to be advertised, all zoning, property deals, administrative code, borrowing, which can be very long because we have to do whole things. So, it really can be quite variable, but legal ads are expensive and they go every year. I also included in your little packet the current state of our budget, and really, the legal ads is basically what we mostly use. At this point right now, we're down to $992, which has to last until the end of June. It hasn't been a terribly big legal ad year so far, so hopefully it will be okay.
Look at this one.
Yep. This page, and it tells you how we've been doing. But one bonding thing can be $200, it can be, it can be very long. So, last year I recommended that we go up to 2,000, and I would say we should do that if we can.
Okay. So, let me just stop a second. It says FY '17, Department proposed.
Right.
And you're using last year's figures that you proposed last year, that's what I'm understanding.
Right, right.
So, where she has this column FY '17, that's what she proposed last year, which the Council approved.
We did, we did.
But the Mayor requested level funding, so we went back to level funding. Yeah, okay, so let's continue.
So, the, so every other year, of course, we have a swearing-in, so during that year, there's a few extra little expenses that we will not have to have next year. So, I would say the $75 for food, we need down to zero, because we won't have a little swearing-in ceremony thing.
It's a little scary-wolpey.
Yeah. The $200 that last year I put into office supplies was to be used for plaques and new nameplates for the councilors. It went down to zero, but we spent a little bit on it. So, I would, I would think that we should put a small amount in there, because sometimes I do have expenditures, so I don't know, you could put like 50 bucks, just to cover some small things.
So, where you crossed off zero, we're going to put 50 there?
Uh, no, put zero at where the 75 is.
Right.
And then right above it with the 200, you can go to lower, I'll let you decide.
Oh, oh, that's a lot.
Because that's office supplies.
Okay.
I'll let you decide what you think.
Well, no, you spend the money, what do you think we should do, our 100?
Our question.
Yep.
So, the way you have it on this sheet.
Yep.
We're a deficit $30, because we had new people and we had new $20.
Well, there was only two outgoing councilors, and I kind of felt like we should try to. We didn't have to get Dan a nameplate, because he already had one. So, we kind of, as long as the bottom line is not in the deficit, it's okay. I just, we did get plaques for Dan.
Well, I think that should be probably 100.
The in-state travel, this year we're at 100, I mean, generally that seems to be for JP to go to MMA.
Well, just so councilors know, we can all go to the MMA conference and tap that money.
But, it's 200.
But, it only has, it's only 200, so if everybody decided to go to the MMA conference, we'd all get, what, 10 bucks, I don't know.
Yeah, so that's up to you, what you want to do.
It's not just for JP, that's what I'm telling you.
No, I know.
He uses it, though.
But, so, the $200, that is up to you, whatever you think you'd like to make. So, that is the expense part of the budget, but I'm...
Talk about the upper...
Okay, so the upper one, the amount, the first line is for the councilors, that is set, so you can't do anything to it.
We will review that, as a fact I'm going to put forward to the Council. The Charter says that the Finance Committee must review all stipends for elected officials every new term, and must do it by the end of this calendar year on Charter, so...
So, in other words, if we were going to change it, we would change it for the next year?
It doesn't change for this budget or the next budget, it changes it for the next term.
Correct.
Okay, so...
So, for budgeting purposes, 27 is what it is going to be, the top line. Now, the next line is what you pay me, the meeting clerk. In last year, the Council had agreed that, I haven't had an increase since 2007. Basically, how I get paid is I get a certain amount per month, and then a certain amount per meeting, and I kind of like that split, because per meeting means that if I'm not going to be here, like, say, for the next meeting, Marion will get the amount that I would get paid for that meeting. It makes it easy if somebody needs to cover for me, so...
So, that's, looks like a $480 increase.
Yeah, so, right now, right now, I'm paid $100 per month and $65 per meeting, we don't have, I always suggest budgeting for full 20, 25 meetings, 25?
24.
24 meetings, because there are sometimes...
Specials.
Special meetings, and sometimes we've been able to move money down to cover shortages and expenses.
So, what would it be with the new budget, if it's 165 now? Or did you just say 100 per month, is that what it is now?
Right now, yeah, 2,700.
So, what would you be, be 100 if needed?
So, the number that you have right there for FY 2017, which we were...
Oh, there it is.
Yep, which we were going to...
120 plus 75.
120 meeting and 75. I, you know, Chapter 41, Section 19F allows a maximum of $4,000.
Sure.
This is below that. I have, and I will break down other numbers from last year, but this amount, this 3,240 was what the Council had approved last year before the level funding.
Well, I'm inclined to tell the other councilors that I'm in favor of that increase for Barb. I would reduce the $100 for general office supplies, reduce it to 100, and reduce the...
Food service?
Food service to zero.
In-state travel, food service to zero, and in-state travel, keep it level funded to help compensate for that increase. I know how every penny is being watched by the Mayor, because we have tough times meeting our budget needs.
So, do you mean 100?
But I believe...
You mean the 200 or the 100, Dan?
Yeah.
I want 100, I'm suggesting 100 for in-state travel, level funded, level, and general office supplies, make that 100. So, that makes, if my math is correct, a total of $280 increase from last year's budget. So, that's what I'm proposing, councilors, do you have any comment on that?
How did you get here now?
Oh, it's more, it's less than that, it's 175, my mistake, 275, so it's less than that.
100 for general office supplies?
I, I'm recommending general office supplies be 100.
Okay.
We will zero out food service supplies, so it's...
Remember, you got the 2,000 for advertising, too.
The recommended budget of 32,715 would be, would be reduced by $275, does that make sense, Doug? The bottom line.
So, it'd be 2,200. Uh, no, yes, 2200.
20, what?
2,200.
2,000 for advertising, 100 for office supplies, 0 for food service.
Oh, down there, 2,200, yes.
And 100 for in-state travel.
But that 275 would compensate somewhat for the increase in the clerical purpose.
So, Barb, what do you give today?
Is it the 2760?
Yes, $100 per month, 65 per week, which is not very much.
No.
Barb does great work, so I have no problem with that increase.
And why do you want 100 for the office supplies?
Because she said she didn't need it. Trying to make it easier for the Mayor, who's listening, to accept the increase in the clerical.
I mean, you could even, you could even go a little lower.
If we only use it for plaques and nameplates, and we're not expecting one to come or leave this year.
We could go lower, you think?
I think you could go lower on that.
Okay, sure, what do you want to do?
I mean, basically, like a token, I, office supplies come out of my budget, but sometimes if I have to buy those folders or envelopes or...
So, we should do 50? Zero?
I think you could do 50.
50. Anybody have the math now?
2,150.
Yes, but what's the total, then?
So, you're keeping, so what you're doing is what you have now in your advertising is what you're suggesting, you, right now you have the 1775 in your advertising, you want to increase that to 2,000, correct?
Correct.
She is recommending that.
Yep, you have 50 in your, I'm looking at what you have now, you have 1775 now, you want to increase that to 2,000, you have 50 in office supplies, you want to keep it at 50. You have 50 in food service, we will not be eating, so that's 0.
Mm-hmm.
You have 100 in in-state travel, you want to keep it 100. So, you're getting rid of, getting rid of your food and increasing your advertising.
Yes.
So, services and expenses.
So, I have 2,150 under expenses.
Right, that's correct.
And so, the net, if, if we approve the increase for Barbara, the net would be a reduction of $325.
The net would be 32, 390.
Right.
Correct?
Yep.
One more time?
32, 390 is the bottom line.
Instead of the 31, 735, right?
No, instead of the 32, 715.
That's...
Same line, different years.
I'm looking at this year's recommended request.
Karen, we're, you know, we're kind of looking at...
Well, this year's, the recommended request is 31, 735.
Right, oh.
It is?
Okay, yes.
No, see, Karen, what, she's talking about her, her...
But that's not called recommended, that's called requested.
Wait, they're doing 17, not 16.
Yeah, I know, but she's using her requested for 16, is what she's using.
She's using last year's...
For, for what I wanted, before, yeah.
In any case, on this budget sheet she handed us.
Right.
Karen, you're not looking at the same page, the total...
No, but I'm looking at the numbers, so go ahead.
The recommended request we have is 32, 390.
So...
Do you have that pegged, Dan?
Yep.
Right, Barb?
I, I'm going to excel on that figure.
It's hard math.
No, what I'm looking at, what was, what was, what you, what was requested for 16, not requested for 17, because those were the numbers that Barb said she originally was going to use, which she requested for 16, not what she got for 16, but what she requested for 16. So, you're going back to the requests of the 3240, Barb?
Yep.
Because what she got was the 20, what she has is the 2760.
Right.
That's correct.
So, okay, so what I'm saying is, you know, your change, your 3290 is, instead of the...
So, our act, so our budget for this year is 31, 735 right now.
That's right.
And so, if we stayed level funded, we'd have to stay 31, 735.
That's right.
And we're not.
That's right.
So, we're netting out less than we're requesting originally, but not...
Right, that's right.
Gotcha. So, we got a little more work to do.
You, no, no, we don't, we're not recommending a level funded budget this year, we did...
Oh, you're not?
Well, I am, but I see.
We are going to request the Mayor...
You can request what departments make their request, but...
Got it.
So, I'd like to keep it at 32, 390, how do the other councilors feel?
That's fine.
So, I'll entertain a motion.
Can we just, one second?
You want some more math?
Yeah. So, 2,050, 0, 1, 1, 1, 1.
So, we're going to be a net above level funding of 655.
A net of what?
$655, so in other words, somebody else has to find 655.
No, the Mayor has to deal with it, and she'll tell us, she can't...
Well, she, last year, we all presented our budgets, and we got to a certain point, and then she came back and asked, because we have full funding, but that doesn't happen every year.
Well, someone, by someone, I mean not the City Council. If we approve this, someone in the greater...
No, what happens is, after the budgets are submitted to, to, to me, and then I usually go through and cut every single one of them by an extreme amount, an extreme amount.
Let's go up by like 5 million.
Like millions. But what we did last year is we said to people, instead of, you know, Melissa and I meet with every single person, instead of us going through your budget and slashing it, if you present us a level funded budget, you know, you can decide where you want to lose your money, you want to lose it in expenses, or do you want to lose it in staffing?
Got it.
So, that's what happened last year.
Okay.
So, most, everybody came back with, you know, a zero increased budget, and those that didn't, then we made them that.
Okay, so whether we approve, well, if we approve this, you may or may not, likely will, come back and say level funding, I mean, there's that possibility.
That doesn't happen every...
I don't, I...
So, we should just put what we think, and then whatever happens.
We have to let the, we have to...
It's your request.
Process.
Process play out.
It's your request, and then what happens after that is then a balanced budget will be submitted to the councilors, and you can cut it further if you like.
We've never, we did that once. In my lifetime, there was, way back, so, could I have a motion to accept the 32, 390 bottom line budget as stated?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We will present this to the City Council at the next meeting. Barbara, can you redo this?
I'll make the impression...
For all the councilors. Okay, moving on, I didn't think we had any kennel donation information, but since we do, can the Mayor please inform us?
Sure, I'm just going to, I'm just going to hand you a draft, our city attorney has been working on it, as you know, it's, it's a trust fund, which was determined right off the, right at the very beginning, so our request to him is, can it be changed, it's, you know, obviously, it talks about board selection, it talks about town meeting, a lot of it is antiquated, so he has decided that, yes, it can be changed, and he has just made some draft changes about things we spoke to before, and that's as far as we got, that's, this is very current, so we can go from...
So, this isn't ready for...
No, but it's, I thought you would be interested in seeing a draft as to, you know, where the changes have, where the changes have come into place, that, yes, we can change it to update it, and those are just some of the suggested changes are in the language.
Do we have a kennel?
No.
Not anymore.
No.
The trust fund would be used for...
Well, that, we, we have a Hayden Trust Fund, is, is what we have, that's very, and, and again, I'd be happy to give you another copy of that, and it's, it's very outdated, it talks about, you know, board selection and town meeting, and how things can be, it's just way outdated. Wouldn't have come into play at all, except for, we had a group of students at Whitebrook Middle School, probably was more than five years ago, probably seven years ago, raise funds to help us rebuild the kennel, and, you know, alter our kennel, that's not happening. So, after several meetings with the people that were involved, and the teachers that were involved in the fundraising, they've all agreed that they would like to have the money go toward, go, you know, go into the Hayden Trust Fund for medical care for, you know, for animals.
Okay.
And so, but to do that, obviously, it needed to, you know, we looked at it thinking it was a little antiquated, so that's where we're at. So, the funds have not been, we have not dissolved the kennel donation account yet, because we, you know, needed to make sure we could alter the trust.
So, do people apply to come to you and say, can I have 100?
It's not usually people that would apply, what used to happen, which happens now with the Hayden Trust Fund, is if a dog running at large is hit by a car, nobody there, police get a call, goes to the vet, and, and it doesn't have to be just Dr. Hayden that fixed it, that he was the one that started the trust, but it doesn't have to be just that particular person, but the animal could be, get medical treatment. And one of the things we wanted to change was it was like 50 dollars maximum, and, and you could never use, you could only use the interest on the trust, not the principal. Well, this is only $4,000 that we're thinking of putting in there, so we want to be able to use, they want, they agreed, they wanted us to be able to use the, the whole entire donated amount when needed, as needed.
Okay.
So, we're not prepared, this is a great update, thank you, Mayor. We're still not prepared to vote on this today, we're just going to, this is for your information.
I'll, I'll give you...
You're working on it, thank you.
I'll keep updating on it.
Okay, Barbara?
Working in action.
You want this? Okay, just, believe me, have a couple. Moving to the Retirement Board, welcome. I have some bullet point memory refreshing for myself, and I'm going to state them. Before I start, Dan, I want you to know that we did put a public hearing in place if a vote was to be taken at the next council meeting, but if you need more time, I have no problem continuing that public hearing, there's a lot to absorb here, okay? So, at the end of this session, if a vote, if you're not ready to vote and you want more time, don't hesitate to ask for that.
Sounds good.
The Retirement Board requested in a letter dated October 29th, that we accept MGL Chapter 3220/6, which allows the Board to be paid between 3,000 and 4,500 stipend. Please interrupt me if I have made an error in my facts. One of the reasons they've asked for this, the primary reason, is due to increased duties, time, et cetera, I will ask questions about that later, but that's the primary reason. Recommended also increased stipends for the Auditor and Treasurer, who are, am I correct in stating that they are ex officio members? Well, one is a member, the Auditor is a member of the Board, Treasurer is ex officio, that those stipends also be increased.
Excuse me, Dan, that's the, the Auditor is the ex officio member of the Board.
Of the Board, the Treasurer is...
The Treasurer is...
An administrator that works on the retirement system, okay?
The Auditor is the ex officio member of the Board and Auditor for the Board, two positions, the Treasurer is custodian of the bonds of the Board.
Okay, got it. The total increase, if my math is correct, is 15,000 if approved, and the operational expenses of the retirement system, correct? This money comes from the Retirement Fund, it does not come directly from our General Fund. This would, and glad Melissa's here, a minor increase to the City's appropriation and a minor increase in unfunded liability. I use the word minor because that was batted around last time, is that a correct statement?
I don't know if you could identify, it gets such a small number in the mind scheme of things, but...
That's what I...
But it is part of the formula, the percentage of the operating cost that is put into the actuarial that's done with a per action.
Okay, so, but what was important for me, because I didn't understand it, was that it doesn't come directly out of the General Fund that the Mayor appropriates, no, it's Retirement Fund, it's totally separate fund. This year's budget that we applied, if I read my information right, the current appropriation from the City is 2,771,000, so that's what the budget is this year. That budget already includes the possibility of a stipend, the budget of the entire Board plus, they included it, because they knew they were requesting the stipend be increased. 71 of 102 towns have said yes to this, 48 of them are at 3,000, 19 are at 4,500, and a couple of others are in between those two figures. What we discovered at the last meeting, first of all, the Treasurer and the Auditor, when we appropriate stipends, have to be done so with separate motions, that is why we asked the City Council to move a separate request for the Auditor and Treasurer's increase in stipends, separate from the Board increase, because they are separately activated by this MGL Chapter 32.
Mr. S, I spoke to the parent attorneys yesterday to clarify some of this stuff, and they explained to me that the Auditor receives the Board stipend as ex officio, and that if it is our intention to make, have everyone have the same stipend, that the Retirement Board has to rescind the Auditor's current stipend. Because the Auditor would receive the 3,000 Board stipend as, for this purpose, it's as appointed or elected officials of the Board receive the stipend, and he said, for the purposes of this legislation, the Auditor's considered, consider the appointed member on the Board. So, the Auditor would, if this passed, the Auditor would receive the 3,000 Board stipend and the already existing 1,500 stipend created by the Retirement Board under Mass. General Law 32B. So, what he said was, if it is our intention, which it was our original intention, for everyone to receive the same stipend, then the Retirement Board will have to vote to rescind...
That's new information, I'll need that in writing.
Yes, and it, it's not retired...
Well, actually, it is, it is in the memo that everyone got.
It doesn't say anything about rescinding it, it just says that you can only receive the stipend equal to the total amount of the Board member compensation, which...
Yes, but if you turn to the next page, that it says that memo from PERF is not correct, in the next paragraph, it says, "It is clear that the ex officio member may make no more than 4,500 in the aggregate, but the final amount will depend on how much of the stipend the local legislative body votes to provide to the ex officio pursuant to," and that has altered the regulations.
But that still can't be more than the Board.
4,500, no, it's not the word "the Board," see, that was the statement.
Let me finish my statement. If I understand what he wrote, what I thought the law said, the amount that the Auditor would receive as the ex officio member, plus the stipend, cannot be larger than what we vote to give to the Board, up to a maximum of 4,500.
That's incorrect.
Then this letter is incorrect?
According to the PERF attorneys, and this memo where it has the excerpt of that memo number two, if you turn to the next page...
So, in other words, it's contradicting itself?
Yes, if you turn to the next page of Joseph Conderton's memo, the paragraph, second paragraph down says, "That section of the statute is separated into two parts. The first part is the acceptance of a stipend for the elected and appointed members of the Board, the second part is the acceptance of a stipend for the ex officio." And then if you go down to the next paragraph, the very last sentence, "To the extent that PERF memo, memo number two of 2012 may indicate differently, it is not correct." Now, he is the Executive Director of PERF, so he's saying in this letter that memo is not correct on the page before. And when I spoke, I spoke to...
Wow.
John Parsons and Patrick Charles, both attorneys at PERF, and they agreed that the stipend for the Board of 1,500 plus 3,000 for the Board would be received by the Auditor if the 3,000 stipend was passed, so not to exceed 4,500. The wording is not not to exceed the amount of the Board's stipend.
So, you start off by saying that the Retirement Board had to vote to rescind the stipend, wasn't that...
That's incorrect.
It's the City Council.
That's incorrect, that's right, thank you, Mr. S.
No, 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 because the original 32P legislation allows for a stipend created by the Board, Retirement Board, for the Auditor and for the Treasurer, not under local acceptance. There is no local acceptance, if you read the original... If you read the original law-
In other words, okay, go ahead.
If you read the original law, it's written right in, not only that the auditor or a person having a similar power would be the ex officio, but it's also written right in the law that the stipend can be given. So it's part of the original 32B, powers are given to the retirement board to create the stipend originally for the auditor and the treasurer. So now, the council would have to accept legislation to increase the treasurer's stipend, to give the board a stipend, or to increase the auditor's stipend. So what the PERAC legal team, three attorneys from PERAC have said, is if it is our intention, which it was, for every member of the board plus the treasurer to receive the same stipend, if the council approves legislation to increase the treasurer's stipend and create a stipend for the board of $3,000, then the retirement board would have to vote to make the auditor's stipend zero, because the auditor as ex officio would receive the board stipend. Does that make sense to you?
It, well, it's totally different than what I was, I thought the city council had that authority.
If you read the letter-
Well, okay, that doesn't make sense. It makes sense based on what you just said.
Yes.
And I'm going to have to see that in writing from these attorneys, which will delay our vote because I need to see that.
Well, actually, if you read the letter, it says that, and then there is an email that Tina received.
It says it's not correct, so, okay.
Yes. There's an email Tina received also that says, let's see, it's from-
But wait a minute, I think, this is where I think Jim's right. Read this next sentence. "It is clear that the ex officio member may make no more than $4,500 in the aggregate."
Right, so what they're saying-
But let me finish, "But the final amount will be determined by how much of a stipend the local legislative body votes to provide." In other words, we decide as a city council what the stipends should be.
Correct.
That's what it says right here.
All I can tell you is that the attorneys at the PERAC legal board told me that the retirement board would have to vote my stipend away, the original stipend.
Well, I don't know, but that's not what it says right here.
We have no control over that, and that's one of the things I mentioned before, that the city council, and if they decided to give you $1,500, which they did-
No, no, they did not. The retirement, years ago, the retirement board, under 32B, instituted $1,500 for the treasurer and the auditor.
We paid it.
It does not require a legal, local acceptance.
Well, then, all right, there's obviously a difference of opinion here.
So-
So let me say this, that statement right there says, "Local legislative body."
Mm-hmm.
It's written by Joseph Conerton, the executive director of PERAC. That needs to be corrected by the attorneys from PERAC. If they're saying the retirement system has control over the auditor and treasurer's stipends, not the city council, because we were prepared to motion for all of that. That's what you're saying, right?
Yeah, if you read the-
If we vote to increase, do we vote at all to increase the stipends for the auditor and the treasurer?
It would, well, for the treasurer, you have to.
But for the auditor, no.
For the auditor, it doesn't really make any sense.
Because you're talking about the ex officio member, whoever that is.
Because the auditor can't make more than $4,500 anyway, so if you increase the $1,500 to $3,000, I automatically get it as a board member. So the increase for the auditor is really pointless.
But the point I'm trying to make is, what I think you're saying, if you are correct, is that the retirement system, retirement board, has control over the stipend for the auditor as ex officio member of the board, in the sense that they must rescind the $1,500 that you originally got.
No, they don't have any control over the stipend as ex officio member. They only have control over the stipend as auditor for the board, there's two separate positions.
Okay, the ex officio member is a board, right?
Is a board member.
I'm sorry, but the auditor, all right, I understand now, the auditor, they have control over that, but they have no control over the treasurer's allotment because that's our control. So any motion we would make to change the auditor's allotment is, if we were to change it, if we were to say zero, it has no power, legal power, you're saying.
That's what the attorney said to me, yeah. And the original stipend for the treasurer of $1,500 was under the authority of the board.
Which he said was, this isn't correct.
So you would need to accept legislation to increase it to $3,000.
For the ex officio member.
For the treasurer.
Yes, that I know, but what you're saying is the auditor, we don't have to do it.
Right.
The motion that we have prepared for the auditor is incorrect.
It's not necessary, it's not incorrect.
It's not necessary.
Yes, yes, I mean, you could vote it, but it wouldn't make any difference in the end result.
But the problem I have is, the executive director of PERAC is telling us, local legislative body, three attorneys from PERAC are telling you, no, it's the retirement board.
Um, no, the original legislation-
All right, the word auditor isn't in that statement, so maybe he's not incorrect. Can you see what I'm going through?
If you read on in that same memo, it says, the ex officio, it says that it's an entirely separate matter.
Yeah, I know that.
In other words, it's under the retirement board's control, the stipend for the auditor.
Well, I accept, I accept it, you at your word, I just want to see that in writing. Do you agree, Jim, we need to see that in writing?
Absolutely, and I would just mention that in all of my experience with retirement board, the treasurer and the auditor are under the control of the local legislature, and that they can, at any given time, agree to increase or decrease your stipends, and the only thing that the retirement system has to do with that is they fund it. So that if they decided tomorrow that the auditor, as the auditor, got a stipend of $3,000, then the board would have to fund that $3,000. We have nothing to say about it. We have no jurisdiction over that whatsoever, that it's totally in the control of the legislative body.
Now, okay, all right.
The original thirty, I don't want to be argumentative, I just want to point something out. In the original 32B legislation, it says, nothing in this paragraph shall prevent any city auditor, blah, 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 or any other person who serves in the active administration, blah, 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 having some other powers or duty from being compensated for services rendered in the active administration. That is under D. It does not mention local acceptance at all. It is part of 32B law that the board sets these stipends, the board cannot increase it more than $1,500. The next paragraph, D and a half, says, "Notwithstanding the provisions of D, any city or town which accepts the provisions of this paragraph, blah, 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 who serves-"
I'm reading it, "Nothing shall prevent the city or town or other officer."
Provided that the compensation do not less-
$200.
So, D and a half-
So I think the question is, if you've accepted that.
"Notwithstanding the provisions of this paragraph, D, in any city or town which accepts the provisions of this paragraph," then it increases it. So what they're saying is, the first paragraph allows the stipend, the second paragraph requires local acceptance. It says, "Which accepts the provisions."
So in other words, the city council accepts provisions, but the retirement system sets the stipend.
Originally, yes.
Okay.
It's written in the legislation, and if you look at number five, it gives the rules and powers of the board, so this is, in any case, they told me the retirement system would have to vote to rescind it to zero in order for it to go away.
Okay, that's different than what we've been led to believe. So let us, let us stop this particular discussion. Based on your comments, I'd like to see the letter. You say you talked to three attorneys?
Uh, yes.
Then all three of them need to sign on to that statement.
The one they gave me at the end was Patrick Charles, whose boss is Joseph Conerton.
All right, and that statement by Joseph Conerton, his original letter, I believe he was speaking of, it's a little too general, he may have been referring to the city treasurer or whoever the administrator is beyond the auditor.
In any case, it's our intention, if we have to vote to rescind it to zero, that we will.
Okay, but I still want to know why the city council's in authority, but especially since Jim is pretty sure it's not true. So I'll ask both of you to deal with that, but we, obviously, this will delay the vote because we want to make sure we're doing it right, okay? I want to open up discussion for the moment, for Dan's purposes especially. One of the primary reasons, and I'll read your letter for doing this, is increased duties. In your letter, and this is from Mr. Dunham, "With reference to the governance," I'm reading the third paragraph down, "With reference to the governance of retirement boards, the Act requires, among others, that the board members follow enhanced procurement requirements, apply increased fiduciary oversight of the retirement system's investments, undergo annual mandatory education training, and file annual statements of financial interest, file acknowledgements of compliance with the conflict of interest in retirement laws." What I think you're saying is, these are new responsibilities since this Act was put into place. Am I correct in stating that, Jim?
Yes, there has been increasing duties over the last couple of years, but within the last, I would say, two years, maybe three years, they've, they've come up with the financial disclosures that have to be done on a yearly basis, and as I mentioned before, those also include your immediate family members. And we have the continued educational training, of which we have to approve at least 18 credits every three years.
You didn't have this training requirement before?
No, not when I started, no.
No, so this all happened with 2011 or '12, whenever this was passed?
Yes.
Okay, keep going.
And along with the educational trainings, you, you're mandated to get at least three credits a year. You cannot accrue more than nine credits a year, resulting in at least 18 credits for the three-year period. We're also, we're not required by law, but we have two seminars a year, which you really need to attend to. Each of them are five days long, and we're in class from nine in the morning till five in the afternoon, generally on class days, in which-
This is all new?
No, the conferences have been going on for a long time.
I mean, but the educational training.
The educational training, all of that is, is new, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. What else?
I know that the investment, the investments are handled by a separate company, but you have increased your duties over them, can you explain a little more about that?
Absolutely, it's, it's the responsibility and the fiduciary duty of the board to invest our assets to get the highest return that we can, obviously, because that goes to reducing whatever unfunded liability may be left, so that that's paid off in a timely fashion. We've done exceedingly well with that. Right now, we have our money invested in the Pritcor, which is with the state. They have outperformed every other investment firm in the state, I think, for the last couple of years, and we're doing very well with it. But it's the responsibility of the board to monitor the investments that they're making and the assets that they're producing, so that-
But you had these responsibilities previously.
We had, yeah, we have, yes, we had the responsibility to, to find an investment company to do this with.
Okay.
Not as recently, but more recent. We also have the responsibility, if you have an investment firm, to, to hire a consultant to oversee the investment firm, to make sure that they are doing everything that they should be doing, and now they're encouraging you to get a consultant to oversee the consultant. By placing our money where we have, we get all of these features in there. But we still have to constantly monitor that, you know?
I don't want you to get the tenor of my questions wrong, I think you have awesome responsibility over this, but you did use the word "enhanced" and "new responsibilities," so I wanted to get that clear. The responsibilities you have already were important from the point of view of managing this retirement fund. Anything else you want to say about new responsibilities?
New responsibilities?
Well, only in, in that-
Because of, yes.
You have, apply increased fiduciary oversight, things like that, more training than you had before, you have to do, file annual statements of financial interest, which we had a copy of those from Dan Hagan. Those are new, you didn't have to do that before?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yeah.
All right, I'm satisfied with that. Do you have any questions on this, because it's a primary reason?
Yeah.
I do have it in writing, I'm sorry, it's in an email. Yes.
He's the one who wrote this.
That's our attorney.
That's our attorney, and it's from PERAC, to Tina.
It would be-
Gibson's not on the period. No.
No, that's our personal attorney.
It's our attorney, right, at the board.
So D does not require local approval, only D and a half?
Yes, just what I was trying to say.
The board attorney, no. Here.
Well, since this is your email-
No, it's Tina's, actually.
You guys remember?
We have a copy.
You got it from Tina?
Yeah. I've seen your-
Oh, I had it originally?
Yeah.
So I guess I never read that.
But this still isn't the final word from PERAC, this is the board's lawyer interpreting PERAC, as we all are.
I think that's, um-
It's from John W. Parsons at State, that M I F U.
Yeah, he's an attorney at PERAC.
Oh, is he?
John Parsons, yeah.
Okay.
He's one of the ones as well.
Only D one and a half.
Yes.
D and one half, which is-
To increase it to $3,000.
Which is the-
So all you need us to do is to approve D and a half, or to accept D and a half, you will decide the monetary amount between?
No, you don't even have to accept D and a half.
Oh, okay. So take it off the tape.
Because as ex officio, I get the board stipend. So what has to happen in addition is, the retirement board has to vote away the $1,500 stipend I currently have, which we've already discussed.
Jim, did you, you might have gotten this letter. It's pretty clear on what he said.
Do you want me to make some copies?
No, I have-
Well, here, bring it, well, we, I think you got it anyway, that's Val's copy, so let's bring it back to you.
Do you have that one? I want two copies of that one.
So we have four members of the board here, correct? How many members on the board, five?
All of them.
Yeah, the entire board is here.
The entire board.
Yeah.
And we discussed this at the last meeting. I asked them, I told them that I would ask them to rescind it if this passes.
Okay.
And everyone was good with that.
If you can have it.
I think that's important to me, because I think it would be unfair if suddenly the auditor, and I'm not talking about you, Val, the auditor got $4,500. That would be not something that I would like to see happen. So I'm glad to hear the board, the board members agree that that is something they would rescind based on that letter?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you feel, Peg, we need more from the state? Because that is from the state's, the PERAC attorney.
Yeah, no, that pretty much, it's pretty much in black and white right there.
So we just eliminate that motion on the auditor?
So we still need to accept, though, H?
We have to accept, we have to accept H, and we have to accept H for the treasurer to $3,000, and we have to accept 32, six for $3,000 per, which is what we are inclined, I'm inclined, $3,000 per board, not higher. And I have to be very honest with you, I think I would do this incrementally if we were allowed to, I'd start at $1,000 and work our way up, but we're not allowed to do that, we start at $3,000. It's a big jump, zero to $3,000, so that's just my thought. Board councillors, I don't have any more questions, because we went over this a lot, but I want to make sure you're okay.
Yeah, I'll be keeping up.
You're okay? Do you have any questions?
Before and after me.
Just want to clarify, from the last meeting, we had asked, is it retroactive then, or does it start?
No.
It starts when it's voted?
So when the council votes, you get a, we were told, that's a monthly-
Monthly.
Monthly check?
Correct.
They get?
So in the first year, it might not be- So in the first year, it might not be 3,000, just because of the time?
No, whatever.
Well, the fiscal year ends in June, so you're only going to get half of it, or maybe a fourth, a third of it.
Or you get the, you get the monthly amount.
Correct.
Got it?
Right, correct.
Okay.
Just begins and then goes forward.
Okay.
Don't be buying that yacht yet. Put it on layaway.
I think you could get a rowboat for 3,000. I have no more questions. Given the information that Val's brought, I gotta remember to turn this off, I apologize. Given the information Val's brought forward, then our, the council's only authority is to accept 32, section 20 dash six for the board themselves, and to accept 24 dash H, which would be the treasurer, or in our case, the finance, should we say, finance director or what?
The treasurer of the retirement board.
Got it. Okay. Well, I'm ready to vote on it, I don't see, and I'm only saying this, Dan, if you're not ready, just let us know.
Because that was the only thing, really, that was kind of still confusing, but it's clear now. I'm ready.
So I'm going to write these motions, because they're based on what Barb gave me, and it'll be the same motion for the city council. I move that the finance committee accept the provisions of MGL Chapter 32, Section 26, so as to provide compensation to members of the East End Retirement Board up to the amount, in the amount of 3,000 per year. In the amount of 3,000 per year. That's my motion.
Okay.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next motion, I move that the finance committee accept the provisions of MGL Chapter 32, Section 24H, so as to provide compensation to the treasurer as custodian of the funds of the East End Retirement System in the amount, not, in the amount of 3,000 per year. I'm not sure why I put this, because I think it's just in the amount of 3,000.
I have though.
It is. It says of not more than 3,000 is what she wrote, but I don't understand if we're just setting it.
Because that's the way it reads.
Should I say that? Okay, then we'll say it, in the amount of not more than 3,000 per year. That's my motion.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We will present this to the city council. I have scheduled a public hearing, even though it's not required, so that all of you will have a chance to talk specifically to this. All right? And it'd be great if you came, if you wanted to discuss it. Okay? That's this, this Wednesday, next Wednesday, at 6:15. Okay?
Thank you. On behalf of the board, I would like to thank you for all your patience in sifting through all of this site. It's a lot of stuff to absorb at once, and I know it's been confusing and stuff, so we thank you for your patience.
Okay. I don't think, Val, we need any more information, because you found it in writing. Unless the board feels they need it, even if they don't, I think it, that was pretty...
And I apologize for being so, I was just trying to explain it and clarify.
Well, I'm still on the record here. The board tonight stated that they were going to vote the stipend for the auditor to zero, and I, or...
Yes.
I need to make sure you hear that we expect that.
Absolutely. If we didn't have to have, we would vote on it now, but we can't because we have to postpone the meetings.
I'd like, I'd just like to make sure that that's in the minutes, that the board is saying...
Yep.
To us, the finance committee, that they intend to vote that out.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yep.
All right. You're allowed to do zero and not 200? I thought it was...
I asked, there's a language about in the aggregate.
Yeah, which, I thought, though, it was, aggregate would be 3,000 plus 200 is the minimum. I thought the minimum had to be 3,000.
There's no minimum, I don't think.
I asked Patrick Charles if it could rescind to zero, because the legislation starts at 200, and he said, yes, it could.
Okay, good.